The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. Councilman Green, will you give the invocation? Councilman Butcher, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you Lord for this day and thank you for another opportunity to give you thanks. We ask that you would come in this meeting and as we direct this meeting, we ask that you would direct it in a way that would be in a Christ-like manner and we ask that you would bless us and cover us. We thank you for everything that you've done for us and we're going to praise you in advance for what you're going to do, is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
If you would place the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
House Speaker.
Present.
Councilwoman Jefferson.
Present.
Councilwoman Butcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Councilwoman Ford.
I'm here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Madam Chair.
So moved by Councilman Green.
Second.
Second by Councilman Butcher. In discussion, let's vote. Motion passes. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? Mayor Perkins, do you have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do, Madam Chair. This week, the application process opened to the public for the Shreveport Universal Basic Income Program. The pilot program is a joint effort between the city of Shreveport, Parish of Caddo, and United Way of Northwest Louisiana. Interested participants can go to www.shreveportla.gov through January 17th to complete the required form. There will be 110 families selected and eligible to receive 660 supplemental dollars a month for a year. An estimated 25% of the citizens in Shreveport are living in poverty and a guaranteed income would empower recipients to address their most urgent day-to-day needs and unpredictable expenses. UBI will go a long way to help those citizens. I'm proud to announce that we are making significant progress with our Real-Time Crime Center. Currently, we have more than 160-plus business-integrated cameras and are expecting to be at 200 by the end of this quarter. Additionally, we will soon begin hanging 270 pole cameras around the city, bringing our total camera feeds to about 470. Keith Hanson and his team have worked hard to bring this project into fruition and they continue to share the good news about the impact the Real-Time Crime Center is having on our city. Next, tomorrow, Wednesday, January 12th, our Property Standards Department will hold a sweep in District C from 8:00 a.m. to noon. The meeting place and dumpster location will be at Gospel Light Baptist Church located at 601 Fairfield Avenue. We encourage everyone to get out and do their part to clean up the district. Lastly, we have two parades scheduled for this weekend. On Saturday, the Crew of Sobek will begin at 1:00 p.m. and will start at the fairgrounds and wind through the Queensborough neighborhood. Then, on Monday, the Crew of Harambe will take place at 1:00 p.m. in downtown Shreveport, beginning and ending at the municipal. Both of these parades have permits and all public safety positions are filled for these parades. All crews have indicated that the riders on the floats will wear masks and members will be asked to sign a medical waiver. In the issuance of the permit by the city, it requires each organization to follow all current guidelines and to provide the city a COVID plan. Planning is ongoing for the four remaining parades and we look forward to Mardi Gras season. That concludes my remarks. Madam Chair.
Do you have any awards, I'm sorry, do you have any communications for city business? Reports, do you have any member that have questions regarding a property standards for Mr. Green?
Madam Chair. I'll just say, I had a call today from a constituent over in the Eden Gardens area and he had also called this right before he called me and called Property Standards and but before I could call Mr. Green, they already had somebody out there. So that's, I appreciate that, Mr. Green.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Did everyone receive the Revenue Collection Plan and Implementation Report? Any questions for Mr. Brown? Today, we are required to hold a public hearing on Resolution 162, 163, 164, and 165. For those with a public hearing, will you come forward? Now, I want to ask, are you all going to do these all at one time?
One question.
Are you going to do all of these at one time?
Yes.
Okay. So the public hearing is now called to order. Does it, and this is your presentation, sir?
Council Chairman, Council Mayor, I have Mr. Chris Clemente here on behalf of the And it's for the New Shreveport Renewal LLC Restoration Tax Abatement Applications. If we could get the video to start as I talk, you'll be able to see some of the facilities If we can get the video room to start the video. All right, before the council today are three restoration tax abatement applications from New Shreveport Renewal LLC. The three projects are total $8,258,716. And they include Lee Hardware for $4,667,798, United Jewelers for $3,203,65, and for United Jewelers Town Homes for $390,553, for a total again of $8,258,716. The applications were filed with the Louisiana Department of Economic Development. The Restoration Tax Abatement Program provides up to a 10-year abatement period on renovations and improvement of existing commercial property and owner-occupied properties as well. The amount of city taxes to be abated for the project for Lee Hardware is $18,616.11 per year totaling $93,080.55 for the five-year period. United Jewelers is $12,763.70 per year for a total of $63,818.50 for a five-year period. United Jewelers Town Homes is $1,557 per year for a total of $7,788. The total of the three projects are creating construction jobs totaling 145 with an annual salary of $3,000,675 million payroll for the construction jobs. It also will create two new jobs with an annual payroll of $82,000. And they were also existing two jobs with a total annual payroll of $65,000. Now, part of the video presentation that we finally got started includes some photos of the facilities. I think most of you probably know of all of the buildings. And with the amount of money invested in those buildings and they really have turned them around in the process, will create great living facilities in downtown Shreveport. And we're asking the council to consider approving the three resolutions and endorse it to send it back to the Louisiana Economic Development Department for approval from the city of Shreveport. Now, we have Mr. Clemente here that if you have any questions between the two of us, I believe that's the end of it. No questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
If not, this public hearing is closed. Is there anyone, I'm sorry, before we close, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor or opposition of these resolutions?
Good afternoon, everyone. Liz Swain, 416 Cotton Street. I am here today to speak in support of Resolutions 162, 163, and 164. In 1998, a company called HRI did something that no company had ever done in downtown Shreveport before, and that was they took two historic warehouse buildings and converted them into apartments, large-scale apartment living, 109 different apartments. This was incredibly risky at the time. No one had done that before. They put their money on the line, their prestige on the line, and they created something that has really enhanced downtown Shreveport. Living in downtown, creating foot traffic, creating excitement, creating vibrancy. Until just a couple of years ago, these apartments maintained about a 96% to 98% occupancy. So they were very popular apartments in downtown. But if you've ever managed downtown, or managed apartments, or run apartments, you know that apartments need a lot of love, a lot of maintenance, and a lot of investment. They realized that they were going to have to do that to the tune of over $8 million. And so they did. They have come in now and they are investing eight-plus million dollars in these three apartment units, the townhouses, United Jeweler, and Lee Hardware, to do everything new. It's going to be like moving into new apartments, new appliances, new insulation, new flooring, new systems, new paint, new look, to make them beautiful and successful for the years to come. HRI has lived up to their agreements to the city of Shreveport. HRI has lived up to their agreements to downtown. They have brought people downtown. They have given new life to these buildings, and I would ask for your support for 162, 163, and 164. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. Chris Clemente with HRI Communities. I just want to first thank the council for their time in reviewing these three items. In 1998, HRI became a part of the Shreveport community. Shreveport welcomed us and we've been a proud member of that community since then. We're proud to be reinvesting into this property to maintain it as a premier place to live in downtown Shreveport. So I want to introduce myself. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but first and foremost, wanted to thank you for consideration and thank you for, again, welcoming us into your community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Happy to be with the Madam Chairman, to our mayor, and to this council. I rise in support of this initiative. However, I hope that with all this economic opportunity flowing through our city, ensure that minority contractors be included in any major capital improvement to this bill. We need to make sure that our fair share program is a part of the initiative to ensure that minority contractors be a part of the economic boom that's generated in our city. So let's make sure that with all these opportunities for minorities and make sure that we will be given these great tax abatement, we make sure that we get some for our vote and ensuring that it's equal and it's fair, it's impartial, and it's very inclusive in our city in 2022. We want to be a city that's on the move, a city that's going to be a win-win for everybody and surely economic development and economic opportunity will be fair and impartial for everybody.
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street. I too am standing in support of this initiative and I echo the sentiments of Mike Williams. Leon Wheeler has done a great job with our fair share program, so I urge the company to participate with our fair share companies and make sure that our African-American firms and other minority groups are included in the contract procurement opportunities for the property.
Is there anyone else in favor or opposing? If not, y'all have any discussion? Not this public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be added? None? Okay. Seeing none. Today, we're here, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, we still have Resolution 165, which is a separate resolution for another, I don't know if you saw that one for hearing as well. It's 162, 163, and 164.
Yeah, that's what I was asking at the beginning, was all of them going to be heard together? That's why I was asking.
I'm sorry.
Let me go over and call the public hearing to order on Resolution 165.
That's for Venue Solutions, correct?
Correct.
All right. Before the council today is Venue Solution, which is a renewal application. We have with us today Ms. Rhonda K. Botner, Director of Tax Incentives with DDA Consultants, and also Mr. Peter Lavier, CPA with Rev Broadband, representing the applicant. We get the video started? I was promised when I did that it would immediately start, so we're going to have to look for whoever that was, you know? It told me that. But anyway, he'll get it started eventually. Before the council today is Restoration Tax Abatement Renewal Application for Venue Solutions. The final total project cost for the project is $16,849,700. The project was the restoration of the old Selberg Brothers building located at 601 Milam Street. The initial RTA application was endorsed by the council on November 22nd, 2016 by Resolution Number 180, 180. It was a five-year period for the initial approval. The RTAs may be applied to be renewed after the five-year term for an additional five-year term. The city of Shreveport taxes abated under this renewal application based on the improvements to the facility is $67,199.97 per year for a five-year total of $335,999.55. The initial construction cost for this facility included 80 construction jobs and a payroll of $4 million. Currently employed at venue are seven employees with the current annual payroll of $369,415. They have a five-year projection of employment to increase to nine to 12 jobs. And again, on your screen, we have some photographs of the building in its current condition after the more than $16 million improvements were made to the facility. And again, we have two representatives here who can answer any questions you may have concerning the project. I think it's probably cycled through most of those, so if you have any questions, we are trying to answer any questions you may have about the project.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Butler. Thank you, Chair. My questions are about the job creation numbers for this project. When we originally, when this was originally done, we were expecting to see 70 permanent jobs at $50,000 salaries per job. And right now, we have seven employees and a five-year projection of nine to 12 jobs. So I'm curious as to why their initial estimates were so different than what we have in the
Where are you getting the 70 number from?
I believe the 70 permanent jobs, I believe that's from when they did the initial sale of the building with the parish.
I think initially, it was 11 jobs.
So there was never a time period where we were being promised 70 permanent jobs?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I'd like someone to come up and maybe assist me with these answers, but my recall is it was for 11 jobs, not 70.
That's a huge discrepancy from the notes, but okay.
You can come forward.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. Rhonda Botner with DDA Consultants. We submitted the application originally for this project and it was going to be 11 jobs. They are going to be ramping up to hopefully that number, but as they made these improvements to the facility, they have created well-paying jobs and they're for employees in this area. So they, we, there was never an intent for 70 jobs with regards to this RTA application.
How many jobs do you have?
Seven.
Seven currently.
What do those folks do?
I'm sorry?
What do they do? What are their jobs?
Peter Lavier with Venue Solutions. We currently have seven high-skill employees. We have two vacancies, which will take us to nine full-time positions. And then, over the next couple of years, we have plans to get that to 12. Specifically, these positions are basically high-end-paid engineers and technical individuals who maintain and operate the data center on a day-to-day basis.
Might be helpful if the clerk would provide us the initial application so that we can review that, given the discrepancy.
I think this goes back to 2015, when the building was initially purchased from the parish. Does this sound familiar to anybody?
Mm-hmm. So I do remember that.
So 2015, 2016, the building was purchased from the parish and within the initial contract, there was some promise of what the economic impact would be and the types of jobs that would be coming within that and with the potential for a clawback if they didn't actually meet those criteria in that there might have been a circumstance where the parish ended up attempting the clawback and Venue or the original company, because I think it's a different name, had to pay back some money to the parish for that. So during that time in 2015, which is a lot different than now, I realize that, but at the origin point of this relationship, somewhere in there, the administrator for Caddo Parish seemed to believe that we were expecting there to be 70 permanent positions back in 2015. And somewhere in there, I guess, that those things just changed. And I guess that's what my question is, is what changed from 2015 to now when there was such a promise?
Yeah, that seems unusual, simply because we have two other data centers, actually larger than the one here in Shreveport in Baton Rouge. And in total, to run all of our data centers in Louisiana, we have approximately 54 employees. So 70 for just one location seems a bit unusual.
I guess they just misheard back in 2015 at the Caddo Parish Commission. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there anyone I'd like to speak in favor of or in opposition of this resolution? No one to speak in favor of or against this resolution? Thank you so much, sir. This public hearing is closed. Today, we will hear public comments on agenda items only.
All right. First, we have Mr. Charles Chanuso. I don't know, I probably said that wrong. Mr. Charles wants to speak on zoning case 21183-C. That seat. State your name clearly, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Charles Chaniarah. My address, 7340 Capistrano Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105. I am a representative of Venture One LLC and I am here for reasoning case 21183-C. That is for land parcel adjoining to the 1802 Southern Avenue. And I am requesting city council and mayor to approve my case, which is currently at RA Zone, and I am requesting to industrial zone. And I purchased this parcel to accommodate my existing tenant. He need more space for the parking only. So I am not intending to develop anything at this time, but just use for the parking, additional parking for my tenant. additional parking for my tenant.
Are there any questions?
I can tell you that this, this particular parcel of land has never zoned for anything, and so by default, it was RA. And the adjoining property is industrial, which is light industrial. And I think we just did a rezoning in that area for an institution, which is also light industrial. So this isn't going to like bring in, if they close, it's not going to bring in some big factory to have that zoning or anything. So it is appropriate. It passed nine to zero at the MPC. The one resident in the area that had concerns about it said that as long as it's really just for parking and not anything else, that they had no opposition or resistance to it. So it's, it should be fine. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Benjamin Boyd, seventy-seven-ten East Kings Highway. Are we only speaking on things on the agenda for today?
Yes.
I'll get at y'all next time, then. All right, thank you, y'all.
Now, Mr. Boyd, you did have raises also. I know you said public request, but you did write on here raises also. So if you want to speak on that, you can. Okay. I'm sorry about that.
Once again, seventy-seven-ten East Kings Highway. Somebody wrote that, you know, money is the root of all evil. You know, they even put it in a book. And am I correct to say that the thirteen percent raise is going to be for everybody? Okay. I don't know whether y'all put some numbers on the wheel and spent it and came up with thirteen percent. And y'all said we're going to drop the hammer, but the federal government don't even start that high. They started like two-point-five and end up at five. I guess y'all want to start at thirteen and then we meet in the middle. But I know it's some people that need a raise. There's some hard-working people in the city. But the people that come to work clean and go home clean, able to leave and just go step right into a party, I don't see thirteen percent. You know, if you're wearing a suit, padded leather shoes, and you look good all day long, thirteen percent, I think, is kind of like out of line. So, and also, our city, it seems like every other month that the police or the fire department need a raise, seem like every other month. And our city, from what I understand, set a record for deaths. So I don't know if that's the criteria for getting a thirteen percent raise or, you know, City Grove, all our neighborhoods tow up, that's a criteria for getting a thirteen percent raise? If it is, you know, we, we got to do better in 2022. We just can't be throwing our money like that there. And from my understanding, the money that people, that our, our government makes, it has to be based on what the citizens make. If we making, as the mayor said, twenty-five percent of us in poverty, how we, how can we, you know, pay y'all what y'all want? You know, you know, and then when y'all make y'all money, y'all want to live Southern Trace or wherever these gated communities. And meanwhile, we in the middle, and we struggling. So I would just like for y'all to think about this thirteen percent raise for Lottie Doty and everybody, because everybody don't deserve it. Now, that's a hard-working man back there covered in mud. I would think about giving it to him, but I have to see him like that two days in a row first. So that's all I got to say.
Craig Lee, eleven-twelve Prospect Street. First, I want to thank Mayor Perkins and Tabitha for attending our dad's on-duty USA Pep Rally, empowerment pep rally in December, right before school was out. So the children really appreciated that. And congratulations, Brother Allen, on your appointment to the city council, filling council, former councilman Fleury's seat. In nineteen ninety-seven, myself and Minister Marvin Mohammed, we were asked, along with Reverend W. O. McAfee of Midway, Number One Baptist Church, to advocate for sanitation workers. I was in New Orleans when I got the call, and the gentleman told me that they received, they were being offered a four-cent raise. I, I thought they said four percent. And they said, no, four cents, like going from seven dollars, it actually was about five dollars and thirty cents to going to five dollars and thirty-four cent. And I say, surely, you have to be, you know, mistaken. So, but they were not. We rallied the city workers. This was sanitation, but I was in favor of increases for all of our diligent folks who work for the city of Shreveport. One of the things that bothers me, it's not only in the city of Shreveport, but throughout municipal government, is the premise that the only people who actually matter are fire and police. I respect fire, police, but the last that I checked, you can't run a city without all of these essential services. Sanitation is essential services. Water, hmm, let me see, we had a freeze last year, so water is for definitely sure essential services. All of our folks who work for the city of Shreveport are a part of our team. In nineteen, in the nineteen-sixties, during the civil rights advocacy movement, the question was asked, ain't I a man? So the question needs to be asked, ain't these folks a part of our team? And if they're a part of our team, they're more than just firefighters and, and police officers here in the city of Shreveport. I stand in favor of this pay increase. I do say that we have to do a much better job of increasing our population so we can increase our tax base, both residentially and commercially. So that means that we have to focus on business creation, entrepreneurial development, and those things. But I'm one hundred percent in favor of our cities, city workers getting their pay increase. Thank you.
Sammy Mears, nineteen-oh-one Centenary Boulevard, apartment M-one-ten, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-one-one-oh-one. I'm speaking on resolution one-sixty-seven. This is a real good idea, recognizing the Louisiana Prize Fest for their ten years anniversary and for their contributions to the Shreveport community. They've been making, oh, they have made so far ten years in the making, and this is far out and fantastic. I'm sure there will be many more years to come. When a company or even a person themselves reach a good goal such as this, it should not be overlooked. Because when people do something like this, they should be recognized for that, which is very important. It's also, just like whoever gives to an organization for about three decades or more, I really feel like this Louisiana Prize Fest has really earned the ten years for their recognition and for what they have done to the, in the community, and they should get their recognition right away. If you'll see, if you, really, if you'll please see to it that this recognition takes place, it would really be fantastic and very much appreciated. And in conclusion, I'm going to cry and kiss my brains.
Michael Williams, ten-thousand Christian Coach, Shreveport, Atlanta. Congratulations, my new councilperson. Madam Chairman, Mayor, you know, I always pride myself over my life for speaking up for justice and equality for all citizens. And I don't make no apology today for standing up for the essential workers, which is the people that we feel in middle-class and working-class America that do provide the essential needs for our city to grow. I'm a former Shreveport firefighter, and surely, that's a no-brainer to vote for the fire police. That's a no-brainer. But the difficult task is to drop your wisdom, Democratic, Republican, and independent, and vote for people, compassion, to be able to ensure equity and justice. We just got through saying the Pledge of Allegiance, justice for all. One thing the pandemic has proved, that people that work for McDonald and Wal, and Walmart and the Waffle House are essential workers, because right now, the labor pool is low because we can't find people to work, and they just move for fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars for those people that we feel are the bottom feeders. I just did a study in New Orleans, Long Beach, and San Francisco. Today, they doing the same thing you're doing. Not only are they providing a raise for the fire police, but they providing a raise for all of their employees at the city, especially the people that work in public works. Now, I'm just imagining this. You got a family, you got five kids. You buy two of your kids tennis shoes and clothes, you buy the other three, how you think they go feel? That's called division in the family. That's called dysfunction in the family. When it should be about inclusion and love, that's what it should be about. And watch this year. You giving a raise for people that we spend tax dollars back into the community. That stimulate and grow any income, you getting a rebate back on your money. So you're really not giving them anything. You getting a return on your investment, so you stimulate and grow the company, spend money, pay taxes, buy new houses, cars, shoes, get the haircut, and go to the movie and go to the mall. So you're really not giving them, you're getting a rebate. So I would ask that you would not, not use your party as a way to not do what's best and right for human beings. If they was animals, you'd rather get an animal raised than you get a human raised. And that's not fair in a country we call America. So I pray, I pray that you would, you, the administrator already done what you asked him to do, to go and ask and get a request from the rescue package from the federal government, see how can they make this raise work. And they done their job. Now we asking you to do your job. Don't let it be about race, don't let it be about party, don't be about economic, social status, or religion, be about people. The people that provide their service, that come in for you every, every week. They're proving that, this city has proven that the fire police, what they need to do, there's a mandatory mandate that the bond is your pass for them. Now, let's pass the bond, the bond that didn't pass, let's pass it for the people that do the work in the trenches, the essential workers, environmental people, that put their life on the line every day. They proving their value and their worth to this city. Now, let's, let you prove your worth and your value back to the people that worked for you in the twenty-first century. They're making raises in the twenty and the nineteenth century. You trying to sustain and maintain and compete with the private sector, you're not going to be able to do it. Today is a day for inclusion and a day for working together. Thank you.
We won't have any outbursts from the audience.
Would you either show the clock or put your hand up when I have ten seconds left? Usually, there's a three-minute clock unless, unless it's unlimited time now. Kenneth Craft, one-fifty-seven Archer Avenue, seven-one-one-zero-five. I've been following sales taxes for a long time, forty-two years, these little charts. This is the one that completed last year. And when I wrote my column saying about a nine or ten percent raise for the non-public safety workers, I thought the budget for sales tax this year was one-hundred-and-thirty-six million. I looked at it wrong. It's one-hundred-and-twenty-six million. My mistake by ten million. Last year, we actually got one-hundred-and-forty-seven million, seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand and change. A sixteen-point-one percent increase over 2020. The budget monthly averages ten-point-five million, one-hundred-and-twenty-six divided by twelve. We have averaged for the last nine months, twelve-point-eight million, two-point-three million, more than the budget. The February first or second figure will reflect January collections, but it'll be Christmas, it'll be December of twenty-one sales. The seven merchants with whom I spoke were all up. There is inflation. The Fed is going to start raising rates in March. That's what Chairman Powell said today to Congress. How much, we don't know. That'll push inflation up further. Crude all was at eighty-one and change when I last looked, about an hour and a half ago. We can sustain the raises. The debits as budgeted vacancies are there. I don't know the exact number, but it's fairly large. I know it's large in police, and it might be large in fire and public works and SPAR, but every day that goes that we don't fill a vacancy, and those are choices made by the chief administrative officer with consultation from the CFO, and get your appointment in two weeks, Mr. Brown, I hope you do. And the department heads, we, we can manage the debits by filling or not filling appropriated budgeted vacancies. There's two sides to every financial coin. I used to call the heads, the credits, and the tails, the debits, because the, the tail side of anybody is our posterior, but our interior looks ahead. And I find some good omens. Coincidentally, as I speak, WE TV is showing on Direct Two-Six-O Law and Order. And guess what? It is season thirteen, episode thirteen. There's a couple thirteens right there. Of course, thirteen is a baker's dozen, and we all know our, our fraternal brothers and sisters in police and fire love donuts. I think we can sustain it. I think it's doable. There's always a chance. It won't be in five years, but you know, there's a chance we'll get hit by a blizzard next month.
I think everybody knows me, Marvin Mohammed. I'm going to try to be succinct here. I wanted to come up and, I wanted to come up and look at a now majority-black council because it's, it's not something to be taken lightly. And I welcome the council members from B, C, and D. I heard that, that y'all was sick, and I hope y'all are fully recovered. But in nineteen seventy-six, there was two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven city employees. Of that number, twenty-three-point-six percent were black. Of that number, two-point-three percent of those black city employees, they made less than six thousand dollars, which was at that time below the national property rate. Their counterparts, likewise, they, eighty-five-point-nine percent of those same city employees was white. I want us to think about the, I want us to, I want us to think about these numbers. The white counterparts, thirteen-point-seven, made below that six-thousand number. Let's continue. In the ten-thousand to twelve-thousand-dollar range, city comprised of one-point-nine percent black. So of the two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven So, of the 2,337 city employees, only 1.9%, I won't even give you that number, made between $10,000 and $12.9,000. In the top two city numbers, CAO, department heads, zero. So, this isn't something new. This has been a historic precedence. These numbers was numbers that was indicated in the Bull lawsuit of 1978. I say 1978 because that's when the plan to change the form of government from a then-commission to a mayor council, see the government. In that lawsuit, at the time, there was 184,000 citizens in the city of Shreveport. That's the 1970 census. Since that time... I'm sorry?
The time.
Okay.
Mrs. Settle, I'm going to ask you to stop doing that. I'm going to ask you to stop with your outburst. I'm going to ask you, you can get out. I'm going to ask you to stop, I'm going to ask you to stop with the outburst. They have a... The bail wrong, Mr. Settle. Then, you can take him out of here. Thank you, goodbye. No, you are not a part of this council. You don't get to yell "time" in this chamber. You are a citizen, but you are not a part of this council. You don't get to yell out of here, sir. You need to be consistent and make sure that you be quiet.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. William Daniel. And this is the last speaker. If anyone else turned down the slip, I don't have it. Did you turn them on? Did you have one? Okay.
Thank you, honorable members of the council. I know y'all have a difficult job. I'm here today to rise in support of the raises for my employees. I think they deserve them. Hadn't had a raise in 10 years, but they go out and do their job anyway, every day, protecting the citizens of Shreveport. I want you to think about another completely different way of looking at this. When we collect taxes in the city of Shreveport, we do it on the basis of a sales tax. If you make $100,000 a year and you have four kids, and you make $40,000 a year and you have four kids, you still pay 10% sales tax, or 11%. I'm not sure what it is. So, we're already punishing people who make less money than people who make more money just in the way we collect taxes. And now, we want to divide people up and say, "You're more important, so we're going to give you a raise. You're not as important, we're going to work on a raise for you." You may not be saying that you're not as important, but that's the message that my workers are getting, that they're not as important as these people over here that are getting the raise. And, you know, I know everybody wants to talk about the winter storm and how my employees performed, and they should keep talking about it for years because it was magnificent. They were great. They went above and beyond the call of duty, and they got the water back to people who absolutely needed water. But I got a memo the other day from Human Resources, and it said, "You know what we're going to have to do is, is we're going, for purposes of reimbursement with FEMA and the federal government, we have to identify our essential employees that need to come to work during an emergency." Okay. I hate that term because I think all my employees are essential, or I wouldn't be having a job for them. But if we have to call them essential and work essential for the catastrophes and non-work essential for catastrophes, I guess I'm okay with that. But I think, okay, they're essential when we need them, but now that they need us, are they still essential? So, I just think they're all essential, and they all deserve a raise, and we ought to give everybody a raise, or we ought to give nobody a raise, or we ought to give a raise in the middle. It's unfair to pit department against department, division against division, and we wouldn't do that anywhere else. We wouldn't give a maintenance worker two more money in operations than we would give a maintenance worker two.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Am I done? That's my three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
I think that's it for public comments. No, you didn't turn it in on time? So, we have no executive departments to be considered today? There are no items under considered agenda for introduction or to be adopted? Ms. White, please proceed to regular agenda legislation. Move to postpone.
Second.
Move to postpone by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Green. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes. It's 6-1 out of the chamber.
So moved.
Second. So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Fuller. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Madam Chair, I'm having just a little bit of trouble hearing Ms. White.
Okay. Ms. White, I need you to speak up a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion passes with seven.
Resolution 163 stating the city of Shreveport's endorsement of new Shreveport Renewal LLC, Lee Hardware, to participate in the benefits of Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 164 stating the city of Shreveport's endorsement of new Shreveport Renewal LLC, United Jewels Town Homes, to participate in the benefit of Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement.
So moved. So moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And motion carries with seven. Madam Clerk. They still can't, I don't know. Still can't hear you. I'm sorry.
The mic's not on. Give us one second. Give us one second. While we're waiting for the mic, I do have a question. Is there anything that would preclude us being able to postpone 165? Can anyone speak to that? Ms. Bogan? We can postpone it if we want. Okay, thank you.
Can we? So, can we get IT in the back? All the mics are on?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution 165 approving a restoration tax abatement renewal application for Venue Solutions LLC, 601 Mallard Street. Motion to postpone.
Second.
Motion to postpone by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just say for the record, in lieu of the bit of discrepancy, I want to do a little bit of research and then maybe meet with the economic developer and see if we can come to some conclusions before voting on this.
Okay. Let's vote to postpone.
For...
165.
Yeah, that's the next, is that the next meeting? We'll come back on the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion passes.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 166, a resolution in support of and establishing a tax increment financing district, a proposed public improvement district wholly within the city limits of the city of Shreveport.
Motion to table.
Motion to table by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven.
Resolution 167, to recognize Louisiana Pride Fest for their contributions to the Shreveport community and to celebrate their 10-year anniversary.
So moved. So moved by Councilwoman Fuller.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion?
I'll just reserve the right to present to them at a later date since they're not here today. Thank you.
Let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven.
Resolution 169, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for sewer, video, CCTV, truck with lateral lantern and sturble transporter, IFB bid number 21-054.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 170, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for Valencia Spray Part, bid number 21-063.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that motion passes with seven.
Resolution 1, suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and any applicable provisions of the Shreveport Unified Development Code of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, Code of Ordinances relative to the Crew of Centaur and Crew of Gemini Parade.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that motion passes with seven.
Ms. White, would you proceed with introductions of resolutions not to be adopted prior to January 25th, 2022?
Madam Vice Chair, the city engineering office asked us not to introduce Resolution Number 4, so I would not read that one.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution 2, authorizing the employment of special legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport. Resolution 3, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Baton Rouge Fire Department.
Is there a motion to introduce Resolutions Number 2 and 3? So moved by Councilman Green.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nicholson. We don't have any ordinance for introduction today. Ms. White, would you proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 72, to amend certain portions of Chapter 26 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the architectural and engineering selections process.
Motion to postpone, and I know what I said yesterday.
Oh, there are two amendments.
Huh?
Two amendments.
Can we just go ahead and do those at the same time? Because there's going to be another amendment.
So, you want to postpone them all?
Oh, to postpone.
Second.
So, motion to postpone by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Nicholson on the ordinance and amendments.
And the purpose on it, because of course, I missed on this yesterday, so I wanted to question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman Bowman.
So, the purpose of this is to...
So, this sort of streamlines the A and E Committee's role and puts into play... It puts in, it adds ranking. So, it, one, moves the ceiling from $10,000 to $100,000 for contracts that go to A and E Committee, and there will also be an evaluation portion to where anything that's going, anything that is being done as far as the RFPs and stuff for architecture and engineering work would, one, be evaluated. Those evaluations go toward your total basic credibility to be reviewed by the A and E Committee. What happens right now is that local and minority architecture and engineering firms are at a disadvantage for consideration because in order to get, in order to be considered for the work, your experience with the city is one of the things that we consider. So, in order to clarify all that and make it a more objective, a more objective process, we worked on this as a subcommittee for well over a year and a half to figure out the criteria, what the weight of the criteria would be, who the voting members would be, and it actually adds the fair share coordinator to the voting members of that committee. The reason I'm asking to postpone it this time is, one of the voting members was the department head for engineering. Engineering has changed, so they're no longer a department. So, that's just another thing that just needs to get tweaked, and then I can explain it better at our administrative conference before the next meeting.
Okay. But the engineering would still be involved in the process?
Engineering would still be involved, like they need to be there, but you can't call it the head of the engineering department if there's not an engineering department.
Got it. Okay, got it.
Any further discussion? The motion to postpone, the ordinance and the amendments. Let's vote.
And that motion to postpone passes with seven.
Ordinance 191 and 195, Councilwoman Taylor would like to postpone. I'll read them. 191, declaring the city's interest in certain land as surplus and our intention to donate certain land acquired by the Department of Community Development to Volunteers of America of North Louisiana.
So moved to postpone. Second.
Move to postpone by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bootcher. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that motion passes with seven. Postpone.
Ordinance 195, to amend Chapter 58, Article 4, Division 1, and Chapter 78, Article 8, Division 1 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to litter and dumping.
Motion postponed.
Second. Motion to postpone by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion to postpone passes with seven.
Ordinance 215, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion?
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Discussion, Councilman Nicholson.
Madam Chair, this is one of several ordinances that would put into place a 13% across-the-board pay raise. I've expressed as clearly as I know how my concern about the fiscal impact of doing this for the city in the long term. We heard our own Director of Water and Sewers, Mr. Daniel, suggest the possibility of a compromise of something less than 13%. It's plainly the will of the council that police and fire not receive a 13% raise while other city employees receive only a very small cost of living increase. I respect that, but it will harm nothing and no one to take a bit more time to try to sort out a solution that is not going to have potentially serious fiscal consequences for the city. And so, I'll just reurge the request I've made prior. for the city. And so I, I'll just reurge the request I've made privately to each of you in correspondence that we postpone all of this and, uh, study it a bit more so that we can make sure that we don't write checks that future councils and administrations won't be able to cover. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Motion passes with five.
Ordinance two sixteen, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-two general fund budget.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor.
Oh, there's two amendments.
There's two amendments. Can you read the amendments?
Amendment number one, uh, the transfer funds from general government operating reserve to Sportran to cover funding for the thirteen percent increases. That's in the cost of nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Amendment number two is the correct amount for Public Works to cover the thirteen percent increase, and that's a decrease to Public Works for sixty thousand one hundred and increased operating reserve for sixty thousand one hundred.
So move on Amendment one.
So move on Amendment one by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
That motion passes with five.
So move on Amendment number two.
Second.
So move on Amendment number two by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
That motion passes with five.
So move on the ordinance as amended.
So move on the ordinance as amended by Councilman Green, second by, by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And motion carries with five.
Ordinance two seventeen, amending the two thousand and twenty-two retained risk fund budget.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries with five.
Res- ordinance two eighteen, amending the two thousand and twenty-two MPC Special Revenue Fund Budget.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And motion carries with five.
Ordinance two nineteen, amending the two thousand and twenty-two Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that motion carries with five.
Ordinance two twenty, amending the two thousand and twenty-two Golf Enterprise Fund Budget.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that motion carries with five.
Ordinance two twenty-one, amending the two thousand and twenty-two Airport Enterprise Fund.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Ordinance two twenty-two.
It didn't cough up, I'm sorry. And that motion carries with five?
You can proceed, Madam.
Ordinance two twenty-two, amending the two, two thousand and twenty-two Water and Sewer Fund Budget.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote. Please silence your cell phone.
And that motion carries with five.
Ordinance two twenty-three, amending the two thousand and twenty-two Solid Waste Enterprise Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote. I said silence and don't let them ring.
And that motion carries with five.
Ordinance two twenty-four, amending the two thousand and twenty-two General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Bootcher. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Which one did you?
That's two twenty-four.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what does, what does, uh, two twenty-four do? What, what's that amendment?
I believe that one is for, uh, police, if I'm not mistaken, sir.
Madam Chair, this would provide police and fire raises. Uh, it's not consistent with what the council's already done with the other legislation. So, I'm going to support it because I've already made clear that I'm supporting police and fire, but based on votes of the members, I don't expect it to pass.
Madam Chair. So, you want to withdraw this or?
My question is, Madam Chair.
Yes, hold on one second.
My, my question is, does this mean that if we vote for this one, that police and fire get a double thirteen percent?
Just ask that with Casey.
Yeah, right now, as I see the legislation, when we voted on the general fund, fire was included to increase their personal services. So if we do pass two twenty-four, we will be increasing fire double, uh, based on the legislation that I saw presented.
So do we need to make an amendment to this? Or substitute motion?
If, Madam Chair, if the council's intention is to provide a thirteen percent across-the-board raise, voting this down will accomplish that. Because you've already made provision for fire and police in another piece of legislation, and the city attorney is kindly confirming what I'm saying.
Okay, so we need to vote no on this?
Well, I'm no. If that's what you choose to do, you vote no on this, but if you want to, you can vote yes on this. In other words, they doubling, you doubling, you want to double what? Fire and police.
I do not.
No, they want to double, they want to double the symbolism.
I do not. I want to, this is, uh, we know it's going to go down, but I want to vote yes on this.
It might not.
Well, you never know.
Well, I think, I think what we're looking at at this particular point, and Councilman Bootcher, I'll let you speak as well, sir, uh, is that if this is already included, fire and police is already included in the other legislation, then just making it clear, voting this, again, are you saying is symbolic, or?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it is. But if we, if we vote for it, that means fire and police get double the money.
Correct.
And I, I'll. Yeah, Chairman, Chairman, but I'll just say this for, for clarity. Um, of course, police was not included on the original general fund amendment being that the vacancy rate should be able to cover the, uh, pay raise that's actually being, um, uh, presented. Fire was included because we don't anticipate the vacancy rate to be able to cover the projected increase. So, um, yeah, you would be doubling up if we did vote yes for this.
Okay.
I'm confused.
I know you're confused.
Chief Whitehorn, so, and Mr. Brown, what you're saying is, we're not using the vacancies to create the raise, but the ARP money is covering only the cost of the existing employees and not those vacancies. That's what was explained to me earlier today. I want to make sure I've got that clear.
The reason that you don't see police in the general fund legislation is because they have sufficient personal service budget to cover. These are amendments to add money to those departments and divisions that do not have enough sufficient money budgeted for two thousand and twenty-two to cover the expense for the first year.
Okay, and I caught that.
Okay.
Councilman Bowman.
You got it.
I, I heard what you said. Councilman Bootcher.
To answer your question, yes, it's somewhat symbolic. Um, you know, I, 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 I am not against a raise for any city employee, but I am against the numbers that we're seeing, over twenty million dollars. Uh, I think that that puts us in a very big disadvantage three to four years down the road. I, I do believe that, um, the only way to sustain that after three years is to go out for a millage, uh, which I do not think will pass, uh, at ten mills, that will generate almost four hundred million dollars over a ten-year period. I, but I don't want the original ordinance that was written, uh, supporting police and fire, for them to think that, that I personally do not support police and fire because I do, but also support all employees that we have. So, um, I guess you can call it symbolic or whatever, but I'm, I'm with Councilman Nicholson. I, I don't believe it'll have the votes, but, you know, I'm still sticking with, with voting for it instead of withdrawing it.
As long as I know that police and fire are included in what we have already done, and that it encompasses all of the employees, that's the most important thing to me.
Councilwoman.
Councilman Bowman.
I needed to, um, I'd like to offer substitute motion to withdraw, uh, two twenty-four.
Madam Chair, Councilman Bowman, it's not the author of this legislation, I cannot move to withdraw it.
I, if I can't move to withdraw, I, I'm asking my colleagues to just go ahead and vote it down because the symbolism is a bad symbolism, as far as I'm concerned. We say that we, we, we for all the employees, but nobody else offered anything else for the other employees as well. It was strictly for fire, and I'm one hundred and ten percent have said that from day one, one hundred and ten percent for fire and police getting a raise. I'm for that, a hundred, a hundred and ten. I support the firemen and the police a hundred and ten percent all day, every day. At the, at, at the end of the day, I support all the employees. And neither one of the authors of this offered any kind of anything, one percent, for the other employees. And that was, that's my issue with this, that's my, that's my, that's, I'm asking my colleagues to just vote this down. I wish I could remove it, take it off, table it, whatever, but since you, since I can't. I'm going to ask the authors, would they take it, would, would, would you, would you consider removing this?
It's creating division for no reason.
This, 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 this is causing division, and the city employees already feel some kind of way behind some of the authors of the original legislation from the get-go. And I'm going to ask one of my two colleagues, who are the authors of this, to please withdraw this. I'm asking.
Madam Chair.
Um.
Councilman Bootcher.
Like I asked, could we just postpone back in the day, several, a month ago, I asked, can we postpone for the thirteen percent so we can come with a compromise with everybody else, and then it was, I was told no. And then everybody made it seem like myself and some of my colleagues weren't for the raises for fire and police, which was a lie. So I'm asking, can you please remove this from the, from the legislation?
Well, I'll repeat my request that we postpone the legislation that gives a thirteen percent across the board.
When I asked to postpone, I did, I got to vote, vote right now or no, that's what they want to do. That's what we did, we voted no. And again, it made it, everybody went out and made it seem like three council members were against fire and police getting a raise, and that was a lie. That was the only way we can postpone that. So either I can get someone to withdraw it, or I'm going to ask my other colleagues, would you please vote this down? Because it's an embarrassment to the city of Shreveport.
So no other person can withdraw this without, uh, except their, their original authors, only the authors.
Fine with me.
Councilman Bootcher.
I'm fine.
Call for the vote.
I hope all employees looking at this. That motion fails with five.
Ordinance two twenty-eight, amending the two thousand and twenty-two budget funding contractual services.
So moved.
Provided for sport.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And that motion carries with six.
Ordinance two oh four, zoning case number twenty-one dash one five eight, one fifty-eight dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of, City of Shreveport United, Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Laguardia Street and Hawkins Street. From R one dash five, single-family residential district to R dash A rural agricultural district.
Second.
To be postponed per Councilman Taylor.
Move postponed by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven, postpone.
Ordinance two twenty-five, zoning case number twenty-one dash one fifty-four dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south, south side of Hollywood Avenue, approximately two hundred and seventy feet east of Linwood. From R dash one dash seven, single-family residential district to C dash one, neighborhood commercial district.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance two twenty-six, zoning case number twenty-one dash one eighty-three dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west side of Southern Avenue, approximately two hundred and twenty feet north of Olive Street. From rural, from R dash A rural agricultural district to I dash one, light industrial district.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance two twenty-seven, zoning case number twenty-one dash one eighty-five dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of David Raines Road and Willis Street. From R dash one dash five, single-family residential district to C dash one, neighborhood, neighborhood commercial district. To be postponed by Councilwoman Taylor.
So moved to postpone.
So moved to postpone by Councilman Green, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven, postpone.
Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table? We have no property standards, MPC, ZBA, or ABO appeals to consider today? No, ma'am. Are there any of their appeals, Madam Clerk? No, ma'am. Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a first report?
Yes, it is. The following letters of appointment, of appointment were received from the mayor's office on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and are subject to confirmation on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Chief Financial Officer Casey Brown, MPC Metropolitan Planning Commission Chris Everson, Historical Preservation Commission Jasmine Jerd- Jerdengen, Assistant City Attorney serving as Executive Counsel to the Mayor, Shenereka Fleming.
Madam Perkins, do you have any additional communications?
I don't, Madam Chair.
Does any council member have any additional communications?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Bowman.
I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for what you did today. Thirteen percent may not mean that much to some, but it means a lot to a lot of the employees that I've talked to in the past month. And I hopefully they appreciate what happened today, and we will continue to work for the betterment of all of the people of Shreveport, the city of Shreveport workers, which includes our first responders, of course. I'm not negating or taking away from anyone. It just, that's, I mean, if I rubbed somebody the wrong way today, I'm 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 not going to apologize for it because I meant what I said. I just think it was an embarrassment for what this this, what two twenty-four was and what it tried to stand for. The piece of symbolism that it was, and I say a piece, but I mean exactly what I, what it is. That was a piece of 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 negative symbolism, which is a problem in Shreveport as it is today. You know, I get a lot of, you know, we got a race issue in Shreveport, and the first thing that comes up about a lot of things when it's a divide up here is race. I don't think it's race. I don't think, I I don't think that's the problem, but we have a lot of, a lot of that problem. And that's what the symbolize looks like for for a lot of employees here with the city of Shreveport. I'm not calling you racist, John. I'm not calling you racist, Grayson. I'm just telling you, this is what it seems like when we go and do negative symbolism mess like that. That's what I'm getting at. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Green.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say to all of the city employees on today, congratulations and may God bless you. And I just believe that this is going to make our city better. It's going to make our city greater. And I just think working together will make a difference, and I just, again, I'd like to say, thank the administration and thank everybody for putting in whatever you put in, even with developing the seed to get to this. Because I believe what the word of God said, he says, all things work together for the good, if we love God according to his purpose. If we had not had this discussion, there's one employee who today will be blessed that wouldn't have been blessed, that was making, I would consider peanuts. But through this, he was discovered, and his life and his family's life is better today. A lot of good things have come out of this, but that's one thing that sticks in my mind, that he was making that little money, but he was still coming to work faithfully. And I just think that, I don't know if he's here today, but we ought to give him a hand, and we ought to give him. That's basically what I want to say, Madam Chair. Again, congratulations. Attorney leaned over and asked me, said, when are we going to get the raises passed? I said, it's already done. So, so it's done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other, any other council members?
Madam Chair, I just want to say as a newcomer, congratulations to all the city workers. You definitely deserve it, and it is time to celebrate. Congratulations. Thank you.
Anyone else?
To the city of Shreveport employees, I want to thank you for your loyalty to the city of Shreveport. What you have shown us and what you have taught us is consistency. The consistency that you have given the city of Shreveport, some of you thirty-plus years. You have labored, and you have labored intensely. You have labored, and you have been honest with us. We've heard your cries. We've heard your pleas, and we have a commitment to you, the same commitment that you have given to us. I thank you for your faithfulness. I thank you for your faithfulness of coming in, no matter rain, sleet, snow, whatever the case may be, floods, whatever it is, you are here. You are here. Some of you have not received raises in years, but this is one thing that you can take back in most, so many talk about sustainable resources and what we're going to do. Let me say first that you are our sustainable resource. You committed yourselves to the city, and you considered, you committed yourselves without even complaining. Some of you the first time ever speaking to the council. So I thank you for your due diligence. I thank you for your faithfulness, and I thank you for your ability to defend each other. What we saw in the chamber several weeks ago is when we saw fire, police, public works, spar, property standards, I'll look and say, look, we're gonna have to do something together. You looked at your brothers and sisters and saw that we were one unit, and one unit we are. We cannot work without the other. Approximately, I think, two weeks ago, you cleaned up a chemical spill where the fire department had to go out, DEQ call, which means they had to call environmental services. You all had to work hand in hand, which means that test sample had to be sent to the lab to ensure that the citizens of Shreveport, and specifically those that lived in that area, had clean drinking water. That was a concerted effort from public safety to public health. You all worked hand in hand. So today is that we honor you. But we honor you in the sense of that it is that we have the task of making sure that we find the necessary resource to keep giving, that we create a system where we will not be in this position again. I know that you hear the catastrophic end of what it is, but I do believe what you and us and what we could do together with your families, we can create the sustainable revenue source that we need so we will not be in this position again. So again, thank you. Yes, it is a day for you to celebrate because you earned it, because you are the leaders. We are the servants. May God bless each and every one of you. We will now have the election of the chair and the vice chair, and I will take nominations for the chairman of the council.
I'll nominate my good friend and colleague, Jerry Bowman, to serve as chair of the council.
Councilman Bowman.
I'm gonna have to decline that. I appreciate that, but I'm, I'll have to decline. I nominate James Green.
Councilman James Green, so for election for the chairman. We ready? Let's vote.
Motion carries with four.
Congratulations, chairman. Now, we will take nominations for vice chairman of the council. I'll nominate Councilman Jerry Bowman.
I have a nomination in a second. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. I can go back to my seat. Is there an executive session? Is there's nothing else? This meeting is adjourned. Congratulations to the Shreveport employees.